Good evening, everyone. Call to order the meeting of the Knox County Commission on this Monday, 25th, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Landy.
Here.
Commissioner Duratt.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mr. Ward.
Here.
Commissioner Schoonmaker.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Bessler.
Here.
Commissioner Beeler.
Here.
Commissioner Daley.
Here.
Commissioner Jay.
Here.
Commissioner Biggs.
Present.
All members present.
Thank you very much. We'll start off tonight by just stating that this work, this commission meeting has been publicly noticed as an electronic meeting under the authority granted by this body by Tennessee Governor Bill Lee under his executive order number 71, which outlines remote meetings and implementing best practices across the state to promote transparent government while protecting the health and safety of citizens and government officials. Copy of that executive order 71 can be found online on the commission agenda page. I'll now entertain a motion to accept this determination by the governor and conduct this meeting electronically. Is there a motion?
So move.
Second.
Sir, second by Commissioner Schoonmaker, first by Commissioner Smith. Is there any further discussion on this? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill votes aye. Commissioner Bessler.
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler.
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley.
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Landy.
Aye.
Commissioner Landy votes aye. Commissioner Duratt.
Aye.
Commissioner Duratt votes aye. Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward votes aye. And Commissioner Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. All members voting aye.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Duratt, would you please lead us in the devotional?
I'm sure tonight I invited my good friend and District Two resident Reverend Dr. Charles F. Lomax Jr. to give our devotional this evening. Dr. Lomax is the Director of Community Empowerment for the City of Knoxville and also serves as the pastor of St. John Missionary Baptist Church in Alcoa, Tennessee. A native Knoxvilleian, he graduated from Corinth High School and the University of Tennessee before going on to complete studies in Atlanta at Morehouse School of Religion and Emory University. He loves our community and strives every day to make tomorrow better than it was today. Dr. Lomax, thank you for being here.
Commissioner Duratt, thank you very much for the invitation and to all of the commissioners, thank you all for allowing me to come and to share with you all this evening. And so as we proceed, let us bow. Eternal God, God of peace, God of love, God of wisdom, we beseech you this evening as this body convenes to conduct the business of our county. We ask your blessings upon our elected officials, these men and women chosen to represent the people of Knox County. We pray for wisdom as they carefully consider the relevant information that is being presented. And God, we pray that each resident, from the greatest to the least, is on the hearts and minds of our commissioners as they proceed through this meeting. We give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for this wonderful place that we call home. And now, God, we pray that your will be done and that through this, that you would receive all of the honor, the recognition, and the glory. And it's in the name of the one who is holy that we pray, and every heart said amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner Duratt, and thank you, Dr. Lomax. I appreciate joining us tonight. Commissioner Daley, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure will. If everyone will stand for the flag that Charlie's got there over his right side. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Commissioner Daley. Unless I hear any objections, here's how I intend on conducting tonight's meeting. First, we'll set the agenda. Next, we'll hear honorary resolutions and the honorary resolution and presentations. Then we'll move on to public forum. After that, I'm going to move item 15 to the top of the agenda to hear from appointed nominees for the Committee on Health and Economic Well-Being. We'll break just a little bit before our zoning meeting at seven. Zoning will start at seven. And that's the outline. As I've outlined tonight's run of show, do I hear any objections? Hearing none? Thank you. Let's proceed. Quick rundown of the agenda amendments. Additions are going to include 1751. And then there are two that do not have a number that will come at the end. Those are R212102 from Commissioner Biggs and then R211303 from the sheriff. So its additions are 1751, 102 for Biggs, and 10303 for sheriff. Withdrawals include 14 and 48, 1448 on the withdrawals. Deferrals, number three. Non-consent items are 1, 2, 4, 15, 16, 17, 45, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55. One more time, non-consent items include 1, 2, 4, 15, 16, 17, 45, 51, 52, 53, 54, 55. Are there any more additions, withdrawals, deferrals, or non-consent items that I have not outlined? Okay, seeing none, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Duratt. Is there any further discussion on tonight's agenda? Madam Clerk, if you would, please conduct the vote.
Commissioner Bessler.
Hi.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. Commissioner Beeler.
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley.
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Landy.
Aye.
Commissioner Landy votes aye. Commissioner Duratt.
Aye.
Commissioner Duratt votes aye. Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Thank you very much. Just a quick reminder, if you are not a commissioner and you're kind of in queue waiting to be part of tonight's meeting, please turn off your mics and your cameras. And when you are called on, we will welcome you back in. We'll cut down on the noise. Thank you very much. The first item are the honorary resolutions. And Madam Clerk, if you would, please read the first honorary resolution, resolution number 101. And Commissioner Smith, would you like her to read the entire caption, like the entire resolution or just the caption?
Yes, sir, the entire resolution.
Okay. Madam Clerk, would you read the caption or read the entire resolution? And then we'll turn it over to Commissioner Smith.
This is resolution 101, a resolution of the Commission of Knox County, Tennessee memorializing former Commissioner Wanda Moody. Whereas Wanda Lee Moody passed away on November the 29th, 2020, at the age of 91 years. And whereas Wanda Moody was born and raised in Knox County and a graduate of Bearden High School and the University of Tennessee, where she received a Bachelor of Science degree in education in 1947 and a Master's degree in special education in 1954. And whereas Wanda Moody began her career as an educator and worked in the Knoxville City School System for 30 years as a classroom teacher, speech inherent inclusion, and administrator. And whereas Ms. Moody held several leadership positions within the Knoxville City School System, where as the first woman to serve on the superintendent's staff, she initiated services for special education. And her efforts resulted in the Knoxville Adaptive Education. And whereas in the 1980s, after leaving Knoxville City School System, Wanda Moody served as the Assistant Commissioner of Education for the Tennessee Department of Education in Nashville under the administration of Governor Lamar Alexander. And whereas Wanda Moody was the third woman elected to the Knox County Commission and served for 20 years on the legislative body from 1986 to 2006. And whereas while serving on commission, Ms. Moody was a vocal opponent of increased government accountability and transparency. And she led the change on many reforms that continue to influence Knox County government today. And whereas in recognition of Ms. Moody's years of public service, in 2019, the Knoxville City Council unanimously approved the renaming of the North Winston Overpass and the West Hills Community to the Wanda Moody Overpass. And whereas exceedingly active in her community, Wanda Moody served as a member of the Metropolitan Planning Commission from 1976 to 1982 and a member of the 1986 Leadership Knoxville Class and served on the boards of the Mayberry Hayson Foundation, Leadership Knoxville, and the Alcoa Foundation and the Knoxville Tourism and Sports Corporation. And whereas Wanda Moody will be deeply missed by the members of her family and the countless lives she touched throughout her life as an educator and public servant. Now therefore be it resolved by the commission as follows. Knox County Commission and the Knox County Mayor hereby memorialize Wanda Moody for her lifetime of leadership and service to Knox County and express to her family their sincere condolences upon the occasion of her passing. Be it further resolved that this resolution is to take effect from and after its passage, as provided by the Charter of Knox County, Tennessee, the public welfare requiring it.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioner Smith.
His video is frozen.
I thought he was just taking a moment up. Okay. Commissioner Smith, sorry, I thought he was just taking a moment. He was emotional. So I was giving him a second. Let's see if somebody can text Commissioner Smith and get him to reconnect. And if not, we'll wait one second and there he is. Okay, Commissioner Smith. You're on mute, but if you take it off of mute, I'll turn it over to you.
I'm sorry, I don't know what happened there.
That's okay. I thought you were like taking a moment because you were very emotional about the resolution and I didn't want to interrupt. And then somebody noticed. So it's all yours.
The first motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Schoonmaker. Take it away, sir.
Okay, we need to vote.
Oh, sorry. Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Beeler.
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Commissioner Daley.
Aye.
Commissioner Daley votes aye. Commissioner Jay.
Aye.
Commissioner Jay votes aye. Commissioner Biggs.
Aye.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Landy.
Aye.
Commissioner Landy votes aye. Commissioner Duratt.
Aye.
Commissioner Duratt votes aye. Commissioner Smith.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Ward.
Aye.
Commissioner Ward votes aye. Commissioner Schoonmaker.
Aye.
Commissioner Schoonmaker votes aye. Commissioner Hill.
Aye.
Commissioner Hill votes aye. And Commissioner Bessler.
Aye.
Commissioner Bessler votes aye. All members present voting aye.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, now Commissioner Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I've thought a lot about what I would say. And I know my words will not convey my complete feelings for Wanda or what she meant to Knox County and me personally. From hearing the resolution, you can see what a great and incredible body of work her life was. An educator, an administrator, and a legislator. But what it doesn't convey is the inspiration, influence she had on others. I had the pleasure of knowing Wanda for several decades. Watching her take action for causes, seeing her analyze and research issues, talking with her about her love for this community in Knox County. She inspired and influenced me. She helped build my need to serve and give back. When I first pondered the ideal of running for commission back in 2014, Wanda was one of the first people I talked to to get advice from. And I know without a doubt that if she didn't believe in me and have confidence in me, I would not be sitting where I am here today. She impressed and influenced me to be a bigger part of our community. She helped me to see we can all make a difference. I miss Wanda in our conversations. She was a great leader and a wonderful woman. Congressman Burchett's here tonight. I know that Wanda and Tim were close, and he would like to say a few words also. Congressman Burchett?
Thank you, Randy, Commissioner Smith, Mr. Chairman, and all my friends on commission. Appreciate Pastor Lomax and that wonderful prayer. Now, Wanda, I don't know, I really couldn't put it all into this short amount of words, but the reality was Wanda was just a dear friend. When I was a little boy, she was with me, you know, close to me when both my folks died when I was older. And she's been a complete inspiration to me. She really, she really messed up the good old boy network on commission. When she came to commission, she was, she was no pushover. She knew her facts. And if she thought you were wrong, she'd let you have it. And she didn't care about the consequences. And she was in my, if you've ever read a book called The Millionaire Next Door, it may be no secret to anybody, but Wanda was fairly wealthy. She basically did it on a schoolteacher's pay. She, I was at her house one time at the end of the month. And it was close to election time. And I asked her, I said, I looked at all these stacks of checks that she had. And literally, I think it was 17 or 18 checks. And I said, Wanda, all these contributions? She goes, no, it's end of the month, Timmy. All these people are paying the rent. And she, she, you wouldn't have known it, but actually, in reality, she actually ran cattle down Middlebrook Pike, if you can believe that. Her family, her mom and dad grew up over there, and Wanda followed in their place. And she, she did a whole lot with a very humble beginnings. And under, she worked under Lamar Alexander's administration. And she was just an incredible lady. But politically, she was a, she was a political dynamo. In my very first race, I remembered she, we all use them now, but these registered voters list. And you got to realize in the 80s and 90s, 90s, when I first ran for the state house, they were almost unheard of. But it's public record. She got a hold of them and she figured out a way to put those numbers together. And when I went door to door, just like you do now, you don't think much of it. There are services that provide that. And, and I remembered I went to, when I first got elected, on the night of the election, I wasn't supposed to win. And I was driving down Winston Road in my old Jeep. And it was right after I'd gotten the numbers from, at Bearden High School. And she called me on my cell phone and she said, how'd we do at Bearden High School? I said, Wanda, I want to thank you for everything. I said, but we lost. And she said, by how many? And I think we lost by about 12 votes. And she, I remember these exact words. She said, Timmy, get home and get a shower. You've won this thing. And she knew, the old saying about politics is local. She knew it. She knew it precinct to precinct, street by street. And, and people would call her continuously when she was in office. And she took care of the details. And that was Wanda Moody to a T. And she called me shortly, shortly before she died, and I was in DC. And we were just talking about old times. And it was a very, very sweet conversation. And she called me, Timmy, and she said, Timmy, she said, you just do what's right and don't worry about anything else. And I take those words to heart. She was a wonderful lady. And I'm sorry I've talked too long. It's a pleasure being before a legislative body that actually knows how to work Zoom and actually gets something done. So, Mr. Chairman, my hat's off to you and the rest of the commissioners. And I really miss seeing y'all on a regular basis. Never thought I'd say I'd miss a commission meeting, but you all haven't been on the House floor. So thank you all so much. And honestly, I wouldn't be here today if it wasn't for Wanda Moody. No question about it. No question about it. She would come over to my house on elections and, and we'd lick stamps and address envelopes. And she was old school, but she was, she was tough and she was a winner. And I miss her every day.
Thank you very much, Congressman. I appreciate you joining us tonight. Thank you, Commissioner Smith, for putting this together. I know you've had correspondence with Ms. Moody's family as well. So thank you for taking care of that. We will make sure that the official resolution and honorary resolution is sent to them and presented to them in some way. So thank you all very much. That completes our honorary resolutions. We'll move now on the agenda to our first presentation. I'm going to flip this one here real quickly and call on Mr. Bagwell, Mr. Jeff Bagwell from Rural Metro. If you would, state your name and address for the record. And go ahead and give us your presentation. Then right after that, we'll hear from Dr. Buchanan on item number two. Mr. Bagwell?
Sure. Commissioners, Chairman Day, thank you very much. My name is Jeff Bagwell, 160 North Campbell Station Road, Farragut. This is our monthly report from Rural Metro Fire. Our engine companies responded to 1,001 medical first responder calls, 85 car crashes, 25 residential structure fires, 10 commercial structure fires and alarms, 20 hazardous condition incidents, 306 special duty calls. Those are your lift assist. We talked about those before, smoke investigations and such. 248 steel assignments, which are your car fires and brush fires, for a total of 1,779 incidents for the month of December. If you're wondering which engine company is the busiest, it's Steel Station 30 in Halls. Halls has it. We just don't know what it is out here. Remains the busiest, but only by seven responses. Station 41 in Farragut is closely behind. And the North Battalion, that's Commissioner Bessler's district, remains the busiest overall by over 200 calls. And countywide, we had an average response time of four minutes and 48 seconds. With regards to residential structure fires, we responded to properties valued at $1.9 million with a loss of a little over $300,000. So we saved on average 83% of the properties that we responded to. Of the fires that we responded to, 58.33% were contained to the room of origin, thus reducing the amount of damage sustained in the structures. From the fire prevention side with our partnership with Knox County, we added two new additional educational videos to the YouTube library. We had 30,550 views for the month, representing through 3,046 hours of program time logging over 300,000 impressions. In addition, we had four in-person events that had approximately 100 contacts. We also conducted four virtual programs utilizing Skype and Zoom type platforms with approximately 200 contacts. The total contacts for all conduits is somewhere a little over 31,000. Support across Knox County is an overall average of 48.5%. It breaks down by region in the county like this. Farragut at 60%, West Knox County at 55.7%, East Knox County at 36.7%, North Knox County at 41.9%, and South Knox County at 38%. December has been a particularly tough month for our department. If you've not heard, one of our longtime reserve firefighters, John Howe Cliff, from the Carter community, passed away from complications from COVID. We laid him to rest on January the 10th. And what I want the commissioners to know is that this virus has affected even the first responders in your county. John responded to calls right up to the time he was diagnosed, just as his father did years before him and his son is doing now, all in East Knox County, particularly in the Carter community. We were honored to have known John Howe Cliff, proud that he represented us so well over the last 35-plus years of service and served the Carter community faithfully. Now, we want to ask you to remember the Cliff family, our fire department, as we travel down this road of healing moving forward. As I've said before, please remember that our fire stations are open to you commissioners. And you're always welcome to stop by at any time. As always, we solve a lot of problems around the coffee pot and the kitchen. And I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Bagwell. Do we have any commissioners that have a question for our team at Rural Metro? Not seeing any hands up, but please accept our condolences for your loss of your team member. And it's not getting any easier, but we appreciate their service and all that you do for Knox County.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bagwell. We'll move to item number two and call on Dr. Martha Buchanan from our Knox County Health Department to discuss the 2019 Community Health Assessment. Dr. Buchanan?
I'm trying to, okay, there, that's the camera. Sorry about that. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I am going to attempt to share my screen. Hopefully it will work. So first of all, commissioners, thank you so much for the opportunity to share our 2019 community health assessment review. My dog, and that's my dog. She has bad timing. This is our cornerstone publication. We produce this about every five years. And the data comes from several sources. And Knox County Health Department epidemiologists analyze the data to help paint a picture of health or the state of health for Knox County. We are going to have hard copies available for you, but you can also find it online at our website. Um, so again, I've gone through this. We do produce this report every five years because population health outcomes don't change very quickly. It takes time to see those changes. And in the shorter timeframe, we just don't see those. Outside COVID-19, we don't normally produce data very, very frequent, or as frequently as we are now. The process we use is a nationally recognized strategic planning model. And it's an important pillar of our voluntary accreditation process. And releasing this report is a crucial step in raising awareness of our county's ongoing health issues while informing our path to building a healthier community and not just the health department's path, but our community's path. You'll notice this is the 2019 report. And we would have, the data was compiled before the COVID-19 pandemic and represents pre-COVID baseline for Knox County. Because of the pandemic, we are releasing this slightly late. And like I said, while we release COVID data in real time, due to its critical nature, that is not our normal practice. And usually, population health data at the local, state, and national level is vetted for some time before it's released, which is what has happened with this data as well, that it helps ensure its reliability and accuracy. We believe this report shines a light on where we are as a community, where we're improving, and where we have serious challenges. And all of this report can help, and this report helps organizations, public policy bodies such as yourself, make decisions on the needs of the community. An example of that is Covenant Health uses this data to inform the community level health interventions, which is part of a requirement from Medicare for them. So what's new in this report from the last one we did five years ago? One of the things is focusing on the drivers of health that you see before you. These are the large external factors like education, housing, and other things that influence individual health outcomes. And you'll notice that access to care is on there, but it's not the largest contributor. So access So access to care is part of it, but it's not the largest contributor. And throughout this report, we look at issues from the lens of the drivers of health. And what are the things contributing to making something worse or something better? You know, we, we know that the community's health is tied to our economy and education. But vice, the, the reverse is also true that education and economy are tied to the health of our citizens. It's hard to learn if, if you're, if you're not healthy when you're in school and you need an income to be able to support healthy behaviors. Understanding these larger factors, we think is very important for us as a community to understand how we can impact health. Again, it's not just about access to care. There's so many other things that contribute to the health of our community. So what happens next? Like I said, you'll have paper copies will be made available. The Community Health Council will take this report, identify three or four health issues that they believe are important for Knox County to address and also define measurable objectives under each priority issue and release what's called a Community Health Improvement Plan, which anyone in our community can use to impact health of their employers or of their neighborhood, or you all might use to, to develop health policy for the county. They'll partner with existing organizations and to implement new action plans. One of our action plans last time we did this was around addressing substance misuse. And what came out of that was our Together Healthy, I meant sorry, All for Knox effort, which is about addressing substance misuse. And actually that action plan is in its implementation phase, so we're excited about that. And after this report is created, the Community Health Improvement Plan, Health Council will come back and provide it for you and other elected officials. And I know that was really quick, but I'm happy to entertain questions.
Thank you, Dr. Buchanan. Is there any questions? Maybe you could stop sharing your screens so we'll get back to our grid. No problem. There are questions for Dr. Buchanan from our commissioners. I have one if nobody else wants to start. Not seeing any hands, so I'll start. First off, great work and thank you for providing this. I, I thought it was fascinating. I, I've been sort of picking through it a little bit here and there. And the data is really amazing, but also looking back at how we've done and things we've improved on. I thought it was a really excellent report. One of my questions is obviously this is a five-year snapshot in time. So given that this is through 2019 and 2020, you know, is our pandemic year. One of the questions is I, I kind of don't want to wait five more years to sort of look at this year or two years snapshot of, because there's so much that we have talked about and learned about COVID, about flu season, about infectious disease, about other health behaviors, any number of things that might be affected by how we travel, how we live, how we quarantine, whatever the case might be. Is there any plans to do a, a sort of a two-year snapshot specifically looking at COVID impacts on the community? Or will it truly need to just be rolled up into sort of this bigger, broader sense, you know, five years from now? And how, how did we do?
So that's a great question and we, we haven't actually had that conversation yet. But, but I think I would say it's kind of a two-part answer for me. I think the lessons learned from COVID need to be shared and implemented way before five years from now. Definitely. And we've learned some things from COVID. Our communities learned things, our healthcare providers have learned things and we certainly in public health have learned things. And those things seem to be taken and used and not, not ignored. I think our next big assessment will be in five years, but do we do an interim assessment? It's, that's a great, great question for me to talk to my epidemiologist about. What I will say is when you look through this document, you'll notice that mental health and substance misuse were problems for our community before COVID. We know that COVID has contributed to some worsening of some of those conditions. And I think it'll be interesting in some extent to see, you know, the impact of 2020 on the other four years of data, because we'll roll it all up into that and, you know, do those, does 2020 really make those issues move up or down in, in severity for our community? Or is it just a blip in time connected to the pandemic that, that is, is significant and worth noticing? But will it over impact the overall data? So I'm happy to take that question back to my staff and see what, what we could do in the interim to get some information back.
That'd be great. One last point and then I'll turn to other commissioners. I, I was impressed. I'm just looking at page 63, but I was impressed throughout the entire report of how there are several points where they say, here are the resources currently available. If this is the issue, I'm, 63 is about mental health and it'll identify who's actually working on this in the community. So much of what we do as commissioners is sort of information traffic cop where we're trying to help connect people with resources or, or explain who does what in the community. And I, I was impressed with it every step of the way. It says, here are the groups that are in the community. Most of these are nonprofit organizations that are focused on these particular issues. And so I thought that was a, a nice addition from the.
Thank you. Our, our goal is for this to really be a resource for our community. In that way, finding resources, but also for our nonprofit organizations to use the data to get, or funding for the issues of concern.
Other commissioners, do you have any comments or thoughts for, or questions for Dr. Buchanan on the Community Health Assessment? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Well, thank you for your work and we have the link that was sent to us and we appreciate the hard copies as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Buchanan. We're going to move on to the item F on our agenda. This is public forum and I have our list today. We're going to start our public forum with your criminal court clerk, Mike Hammond. He's going to talk about the sheriff's added item number 303. And then just in the on-deck circle, we will begin with a public comment from Janet, Brady Watson, Ally Cohn, Sherry Garrett, Anne Strange, Jean Burr, and then I'll kind of recap the list here in a minute. So first call on criminal court clerk, Mr. Mike Hammond, to join us and turn his camera on so we can see him if he is still with us. I see his name and I see his face. Mr. Hammond, thank you for joining us in Knox County Commission.
Sure. Thank you so much Commissioners. As Chairman Jay mentioned, I'm here to talk to you about an item that Tom Spangler is going to have before you in just a little while. I wanted to say that the pandemic, of course, has forced all of us to rethink the way that we do business. For example, right now, you ladies and gentlemen are conducting county's business via Zoom. And so we in the court system have also had to rethink doing our business. In fact, the State Supreme Court has ordered, and I'd like to read from the order, says courts should continue to conduct as much business as possible by means other than in-person court proceedings. Courts are encouraged to continue and even increase the use of telephone, teleconferencing, email, video conferencing, or other means that do not involve in-person contact. All these message methods should be the preferred option over in-person court proceedings. It goes on to say, judges are charged with the responsibility of ensuring that core constitutional functions and rights are protected. Additionally, court clerks are charged with ensuring that court functions continue. I'd like to say that I believe that we in the court system have done that. We've stepped up to make sure that the courts have function. My office has been open to the public every workday with special COVID protocols. And because of the rule limiting in-person proceedings, our clerks in criminal and criminal sessions have reset over 18,000 cases. But as I mentioned, the judges are charged with ensuring core constitutional functions and rights are being protected. And this includes those who are incarcerated. For several months, we've attempted to have proceedings at the detention facility remote, but we're severely limited in space. In fact, we have one space, one area where we can do this. The proposal by Sheriff Spangler will give us additional space needed to carry out the Supreme Court mandate as well as keep people as safe as possible. We've already installed remote equipment here in most of our courtrooms in the city county building. We use this through a special technology fund that we have. And this equipment is going to serve us for years. But I wanted to give you some specific numbers. In October, excuse me, November, December and January, in our criminal court division with our three criminal court judges, we have already had 1,500 video cases. Now, if I were to go all the way back to March, that figure would be much greater. That's only like a three-month snapshot. In criminal sessions with our five judges, they have been holding in-person hearings with what we call the jail cases. They have been bringing the prisoners over from jail to make sure that their constitutional rights were being upheld. The criminal judges did not start video conferencing until the latter part of December and also here in January, mainly because of space requirements. But in that time, in October, November and December, we had in this building between four and 5,000 cases. Now, I say cases because an individual may have more than one case, but you can imagine that we're talking about hundreds of individuals who have come into this building to have their hearing heard in sessions. Since we have started the video conferencing, we have had over 1,000 cases just in our sessions courts. So while the price tag I'm not real sure about, I would like you to consider this. Our deputies have to get these prisoners up if they come to this building. They got to feed them, transport them to and from the city county building. They've got to have adequate security during that transport as well as here in the building. So lowering the numbers that have to come into this building is obviously going to save money. And so I wanted to give you an idea of the magnitude of what we're looking at. So that as you consider this, I would like to be on record as saying that this is needed, of the magnitude of it or the scope of it, I'll let Sheriff Spangler talk about. But I wanted to just give you an idea so that as you are considering your decisions, that you know the magnitude of what we're looking at. It is substantial. And I, I want to emphasize, I think our clerks and our people in the court system have done a good job, but we have a long way to go. But thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. I appreciate you joining us tonight. Our first member of public forum is Janet Alessa G. And if you would, please identify yourself and turn your video on. And there you are, Alessa Grant. And if you would, please state your name and your county of record. You have five minutes to address commission.
Uh, yes, Alyssa Janet Grant, 37923 Knox County. Ready?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening, County Commissioners, County Sheriff and all Knox Countyans. I wholeheartedly support our Board of Health. I do not want to see that team rearranged in any way, especially not to have its authority stripped because of any political motivation. The Board of Health is the only credential body here putting forth sound policy to assist with public safety. Public health experts, scientists, data the world over have proven that further calamity can be significantly mitigated by enforcing mask mandates. Our Board of Health needs to remain in its current state to help us recover faster, to resume the vibrant life we miss. To support them in this mission should be a given, never a topic for debate. Now to turn to the Knox County economy as it relates to mandatory masking. Fact, small and medium-sized businesses are the backbone of the US economy. To claim that Knox County's economy is at risk of crashing down by keeping the mask mandate is simply a fallacy. I've informally researched the stories of county businesses that are new, expanded, relocated, renovating, merging, refocusing their operating models, on hold until better days and those that are, have closed. By far, I find more documentation of new and growing businesses in 2020 with more forecasts to launch this year than I have those that have closed in that timeframe. My numbers don't cover all business activity. My primary sources are Knox News and Inside of Knoxville. Inside of Knoxville only covers downtown and near downtown. So I'm keeping my numbers conservative. My brief time in this forum doesn't permit me to name businesses I've tracked, excuse me, but it's all in the public domain. My estimates of business activity since February 2020 are new businesses, a conservative tally of 40, expanded nine, renovating one, consolidated two, closed 11. And returning to Knox County after closing both stores, we have Earth Fair. Most, if not all, of our new businesses require masking and social distancing. Their community minded first, they own the ethical responsibility for safety on their premises. Ensuring customer safety by insisting on masking is the precursor to their profitability and viability. For those that have closed, some are attributable to pre-pandemic challenges. For some others, we're seeing the unfortunate effects of lack of vision, innovation and creativity to meet the challenges of the pandemic. Still, other businesses may be part of the constant shakeout that don't survive for any number of reasons. We see this all year, every year. And now it works specifically for county commissioners. My friends across North America and almost every continent on this globe know what's happening in Knox County. They know our above-average COVID infection rate. They see it in the news and frankly, they're horrified. So I ask each of you whether you care about the big picture, far beyond bold-faced local politics. Here's just one example of why you should care, Commissioners. Consider how Knox County's health policy can affect our county's economic well-being. So many here shout about being concerned with economics inconvenience primarily, minimizing the criticality of public health. But the large businesses that our economic development groups try to recruit here very much do care. Companies that locate here bring new jobs, yet too many residents who are behaving against the public interest complain loudly about lack of opportunity. Companies searching for new sites prioritize quality of life for their employees. So will people relocate here? They're asking if they want to stay here, giving the me-first attitudes of too many residents in our county. That company is asking itself, can they grow here? How could Knox County attract new business and generate new opportunities for our people when the available workforce, especially those who think and behave like they're invincible, is at significant risk of becoming sick, either short-term or long-term? Sick employees can't come to work. Without a dependable labor supply, a business cannot be viable here. Commissioners, I hope each of you will think and act in the interest of public safety first before you record your votes tonight on our Board of Health's destiny. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grant. Next up on public forum is Brady Watson. Brady Watson, if you are with us, please, there you are. If you would, please state your name and your county of residency for the record. You have up to five minutes to address commission.
Yes, hi there, Brady Watson. My address is 29 Haywood Avenue here in Knox County. Thank you all for allowing me to speak with you this evening. I'm here to speak tonight in opposition to the ordinance to make the county Board of Health an advisory-only entity. And I wanted to start by thanking the commissioners who voted against that effort at last month's meeting, with particular thanks to Commissioner Jay as a Republican who warned that this would lead to during the height of the pandemic. And unfortunately, that came true, as I'm sure many of you saw the, the national headlines that our county unfortunately was the subject of. And not for good reason. I think this is, is an incredibly foolish action to be undertaking during the middle of the worst pandemic in 100 years. Our county has been one of the hottest spots in the country, unfortunately for COVID cases. And the County Board of Health is made up of a number of medical professionals with a wealth of experience in their respective fields. These board members are not politicians and they do not have agendas. Their task is to look at the data and recommend actions to help control the spread of COVID under the spec, special circumstances in a state of emergency declared by the governor. This is also not some sinister force from within that was implied by the county mayor. And I fully support the medical professionals on the Board of Health and Chair Dr. Martha Buchanan. The actions they have suggested to this point are completely reasonable and backed by science. For example, we know that masks, masks stop the spread of the virus, which has been borne out by countless studies and a wealth of data backing this up. We also know that places where people are inside in close proximity and in situations where they might not be masked can also lead to increased spread of the virus. So the Board has made recommendations to encourage mask wearing in limited situations, which may lead to increased transmission of the virus. You know, it's not hard to wear a mask, though it may be uncomfortable, uncomfortable at times. And I think we should all be willing to wear one to protect our neighbors. This really is an attempt by the Board. This really isn't an attempt by the board to encroach on our constitutional rights. This is an attempt to save lives. And to commissioners who might be questioning the constitutionality of the board, I just ask you to consider what is all in this board would do. And if it's really, you know, a good idea to put these powers in the hands of one person, even someone as capable as Dr. Buchanan, or leaving them in the hands of several. I know Dr. Buchanan is more than capable, but if your concern is over concentration of power, this seems to do the exact opposite of what you intend. I know that folks may not be as concerned about the virus, but I know there are many Knox County residents who are. And fortunately, we have lost almost 500 of our fellow Knox County residents to this point, and unfortunately, there will likely be many more before we get through this. So commissioners, I would just urge you this evening to vote against this ordinance, leaving the Board of Health able to respond to new developments with the virus and issue guidance as they see fit to help slow its spread. They know best how to respond to this, better than any of us, and they should remain the ones in charge of leading the fight against this virus. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Next up on our public forum, I'll go down the list here to kind of put the on-deck circle. It'd be Ally Cohn, Sherry Garrett, Anne Strange, and Jean Burr. Ally Cohn, if you would, there you are. If you would, please state your name and your county of residence. For the record, you have up to five minutes to address commission.
Thank you. My name is Ally Cohn, and I am a resident of Knox County. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to address you all this evening. Many of the facts and sentiments I will present to you tonight were initially emailed to all of you on January 20th. Please refer back to that if you need to reference the following data. On December 28th, when that email was originally drafted, the total number of Knox Countyans who had died from COVID-19 was 306. 124 of those deaths have occurred in the month of December. A typical flu season in Knox County kills around 120 residents for the entire year. As of January 20th, the death toll was 409 deaths, more than 123 days. Let's look back a bit. On September 28th, we were well into the pandemic. By this time, we knew that the disease was highly infectious. 2.8% of those who had tested positive had died. We had good science indicating that the disease spread through person-to-person contact, and we had plenty of evidence indicating that masks and social distancing were among the best ways to fight it. On that day, coronavirus had killed 83 people in Knox County. Rather than taking steps to support the Board of Health and its scientific common sense measures to slow the spread of the virus, the county government allowed unmasked individuals into the city-county building to recite baseless and foolish conspiracy theories. In addition to breaking the local mask mandate, this placed everyone in that building at risk, from the officers working the door to the citizens who came to the meeting to the custodial staff who had to clean up afterwards. And it set a terrible example for citizens who may have been on the fence about the correct way to deal with this deadly pandemic. On that day, eight commissioners voted to approve a resolution which undercut the Board of Health and made it difficult, if not impossible, to enforce common sense measures such as a mask mandate. As of the October 26th meeting, 101 Knox Countyans had died. The day after the November meeting, Knox County set a record with seven deaths in one day. By this point, around 130 Knox Countyans had died, and all indications were that we were going to have a rough and deadly holiday season. For the December meeting, the county leadership could have addressed the seriousness of this pandemic. You could have taken steps to support the Board of Health and their most recent moves to attempt to save lives. You could have worked to educate the public on the science and the best ways to prevent spreading this disease. Instead, six of you voted to remove the power of the Board of Health completely. By this time, 266 Knox Countyans had died. There is nothing we can do for the more than 400 dead Knox Countyans, and there is not a lot we can do for the 4,000-plus Knox Countyans who are currently infected. But you can still provide leadership to the community, our community. You can provide clear, non-politicized, science-backed leadership on how to fight the disease and slow the spread. It was also incredibly embarrassing and shameful to see Knoxville make national news in regards to stripping power from the Board of Health. Multiple friends from other states I have lived in reached out to ask me if this was even real because it seems so outlandish, particularly in the moment we are currently in. It is not too late to do the right thing, and you will be remembered for your actions. I urge you, please, to continue to give the Board of Health the power that they need to make the decisions that protect all of Knox Countyans. Thank you so much for letting me speak to you tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Cohn. Next up, Sherry Garrett, Anne Strange, Jean Burr, Jenna Mashburn, and Courtney Shea. Ms. Garrett, I see you. If you would, please state your name and your county of residence for the record. You have five minutes to address commission.
My name is Sherry Garrett. I live in Knox County. A lot of things have happened this past week, and a lot of things are coming out. We'll start with PCR test. Remember last fall when some of us called to question the amplification cycles of PCR tests? Well, last week, the World Health Organization updated their guidelines to reading these tests, causing labs to take careful interpretation of weak positive results when cycle threshold needed to detect the virus is proportional to the patient's viral load. When test results do not correspond with clinical presentation, as in symptoms, a new specimen should be obtained and retested. It also states that disease prevalence alters the predictive values of test results as disease prevalence decreases the risk of false positive increase. So basically, if you're asymptomatic, you're likely a false positive. This is the gold standard of testing that the Board of Health and the Health Department has lauded, even though we and many experts have questioned the test that had never, that was never created for diagnostic testing. We could all talk about the prevalence and increase in male health and suicide and overdose rates, including the young lady who passed away from suicide last summer in Commissioner Hill's district. But I'm going to tell you a story. I received a message from a friend of mine who was at a loss as to what to do. Her 89-year-old grandmother fell three weeks ago in her garage and hit her head on the deep freezer. She went to the ER. When she refused the COVID test, they became dismissive. They didn't even look at her neck or head. She says it's so painful. They made her wait in the ER for five hours before they even saw her, didn't do any test, and finally, her grandma said, "I'm not leaving without a CT scan at least," and they finally did one. But her grandmother, who has no mental issues and no deficits, said, "I'm not leaving without a CT scan," and they finally did one. But when she said she wasn't in there for two minutes, they said, "They don't see anything. Follow up with your doctor in 10 days." Since that time, she's been to urgent care, having seen three doctors, and finally, last Friday, the nurse practitioner in her primary care office. This is what she stated to me. They didn't even look at her neck or the back of her head. She claims it's so painful. She's had a couple of dizzy spells, but mainly just pain. It really upsets me that she's not being cared for. An 89-year-old woman with a head injury, and they wanted to COVID-test her. That doesn't seem right to me. I had to speak up and question the nurse practitioner, and she looked at me like, "How dare I?" Then they were almost bullying her about getting the test. I referred her to someone who will actually treat her. Unfortunately, I've heard stories like this over and over from friends and family. Lack of treatment and forced testing just to be seen or treated, this has to stop, and this begins with removing the powers of the Board of Health. Lastly, I understand some of you perceive death threats. I find any threat abhorrent, and I pray that those perpetrators are found and prosecuted. But we cannot let an unknown third party take over our county commission in our county. I'm keeping you all in my prayers each and every day for your safety and for courage. God bless you all.
Thank you, Ms. Garrett. Next up in our public forum is Anne Strange. Ms. Strange, there you are. If you would, please state your name and your county of residence, and you have five minutes to address commission.
Good evening. I'm Anne Strange and live in Knox County. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to talk about the Board of Health. After more than 400 of our neighbors have died and many more sick, the pandemic is still with us and possibly will be seeing more deadly variants. The Board of Health is actively being threatened with being abolished. Who does it hurt when you make this threat? The staff of the Health Department, nurses, doctors, and other medical providers in Knoxville, and everyone who lives in Knoxville? Because you are threatening to take away the medical experts that we need and that we rely on for accurate information. I understand that businesses are complaining that regulations are making it hard for them to survive. But there are businesses in the city that are managing. The few in the city that are not complying are contributing to the ongoing spread and will have consequences such as losing their licenses. This is logical and a good application of the law. On the other hand, the Knox County Sheriff's Department is not forcing compliance with the Health Department's regulation. They offer thoughts and prayers when one of their own dies, but they don't seem to make the logical jump to their stance of non-enforcing the regulation. And what are the results of non-compliance in Knox County? No penalties for the businesses. So I believe that most businesses could survive if there were more penalties for non-compliance. I believe it was Carson Daly who was worried that we would be throwing people in jail with little cause. But currently, the businesses in Knox County are not being held to any standard, and we are all losing. You know those plaques on public buildings that said who was in office when it was built? I think you should be concerned about how you will appear in history when the time and story of this deadly pandemic is reviewed. This is not the time for a change. Don't just vote to postpone this. It just prolongs the tension among the people who are helping us through this pandemic. Please vote to send this motion to the scrap heap of bad ideas. I appreciate your listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Strange. Next up on our lists are Jean Burr, Jenna Mashburn, Courtney Shea, Nan Scott, and Edward Patrick. I'll look for Jean Burr next. Oh, there you are. If you would, unmute yourself, Mr. Burr, and state your name and your county of residence for the record. And you'll have up to five minutes to address commission, and you're still on mute. It's usually on the bottom left there. There you are.
Is that okay?
Yes, sir. If you would, please state your name and your county of residence, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jean Burr, live in Knox County, 3621 Maloney Road. It's a pleasure to address the commission on this subject, very important to us, particularly in this day and time. I want to declare that I am not a disinterested bystander in this discussion of this issue. My wife and I are 86, 88. We're considered part of the vulnerable population, so to speak. We tried to sign up for vaccine when it first started being shipped to East Tennessee, and we couldn't get on waiting list in Knox County, and so we called Union County, and they said, "Okay, we'll put you on our waiting list. You're number 800." Needless to say, that wasn't the most reassuring, but we hope that if we're careful and that if our fellow Knox Countyans will wear masks and help us protect each other, that we'll survive. My first point I wanted to make, Mr. Chairman, is that I think, and it's been stated eloquently, that the Board of Health is constituted to be able to deal with the kind of questions that they have to deal with. And I think the county commission has a unique capability that I think lies in a different area, and I'd like to make some points in that issue, but I think important thing for me, as far as the Board of Health goes, is that they be held accountable to do the job they're appointed to do and to make sure we don't do anything that would undermine that capability. And that can't be said with sufficient emphasis, but I think the point's been well made. The other thing I wanted to point out, Mr. Chairman, and members of the commission, is that there are things that the commission can do. And I think those fall into the areas of support for our local economy in ways that are appropriate. We know that certain businesses, because of the nature of the business, have been asked to cooperate by limiting their hours, limiting the number of people that they allow in. And I think it's those businesses that I would like to encourage you and the commission to incentivize in the disposition of any kind of financial support that becomes available. So that we know the police department and the Board of Health know which businesses those are that have cooperated with safety precautions as far as the pandemic goes. And so it's with that caveat on the front end that I'd like to mention some of the things that I was less aware of until I had the opportunity to do some reading on it. One thing that was mentioned to me is that, and we may not all be aware of this, is that the sales tax in Knox County is up this year, which puts us in a position to have more resources than we may have had in the past. Tennessee, and in this regard, I realize that Knox County Commission can't substitute itself for the state legislature, but we do have something called our local legislative delegation who can assist us in guiding the state, in using the resources of the state in the most appropriate and most constructive manner. Some of the things that I was unaware of before is that Tennessee has spent $732 million in unspent federal funds, where we've all heard about all the money that was allocated to help poor families that was just being kind of bankrolled, being put in rainy day funds. And I think to encourage through our state legislative delegation, the appropriate use of those funds, I think is one thing that the county commission can certainly do. Tennessee has also had $200 million in unallocated relief funds from last year's stimulus. I understand that those funds through the governor and his task force could allocate to assist small businesses. $16 million of the state's 200 million went to Knox County businesses, which is encouraging. That shows that some state resources are going to help our local businesses.
Mr. Burr, your time is up. If you could just wrap up your comments, please.
Well, I will. And the comment that I'd like to make, Mr. Chairman, is that I was surprised that 98%, we have 98% less cases of flu in Knox County because of the habits of mask-wearing as a direct result of that in the eyes of the folks that are supposed to know about that. And I think if we have that kind of positive result from mask-wearing, it should encourage us to follow that guideline with some dedication and enthusiasm. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Burr. Next up is Jenna Mashburn. If you would, turn your camera on and make yourself known. Am I saying that correctly?
You've got it right. Thank you.
Ms. Mashburn, if you would.
And thank you, commissioners.
No problem. Just state your name and your county residence for the record, and then you have five minutes.
Jenna Mashburn, Knox County. I imagine that every person here tonight, and probably every person in our community, can agree on two things. Number one, we want the deadly virus to be eradicated. I'll look at those numbers every day. I heard the gentleman from Rural Metro talk about his colleague who had died from it. I myself had a sister die last week, not here in Knox County. But behind all of the numbers that we see are people, a member of our community who is either sick or has died. The second thing I think we all agree on is that we want a robust economy. We all want small business owners and large business owners to succeed, for our restaurants and our bars to return to normal. Those two wishes are not.
Ms. Mashburn looks like he's frozen. Rob, why don't you, I'm going to hold her time, and maybe you can see if you can mute her or get her back online, and I'm going to go to our next member, which is Courtney Shea, and if you can let me know if Ms. Mashburn gets back online, we'll give her time back. Courtney Shea, are you with us? Okay, if you could turn your volume up, it's quite low, or just speak up. If you would, please state your name and your county of residence, and you'll have up to five minutes to address commission.
My name is Courtney Shea. I have lived in Knox County for 40 years and still live in Knox County. My name is Courtney Shea. I have lived in Knox County for forty years and still live in Knox County. I ask you to oppose the ordinance disbanding the Board of Health for four reasons. First, I'm a mother. My two daughters, who work in Knox County retail, both contracted COVID at work despite scrupulous mask wearing. The youngest still has not recovered. In my extended family across the country, others have had COVID. One has died. One is still on oxygen months after contracting the virus. As our elected officials, your first priority should be doing everything possible to protect the lives of our citizens. This ordinance overburdens our health director and does nothing to protect our health. Second, this ordinance is not good government and fails the test of being in the best interest of Knox County. I submit you've given insufficient attention to the long history in our state of boards of health, and there are powers to address epidemics. And historically, our state legislature and our county government have found that through painful experience that emergency epidemic measures have been legally and most effectively effectively exercised through boards of health. One hundred and forty years ago, our state empowered the Board of Health to issue regulations to address epidemics. Emergency health regulations are not unconstitutional. A drastic departure from historical authority should not be taken in the midst of this crippling epidemic. This is bad timing. This ordinance will do nothing to aid small businesses? I personally am afraid to go into beloved local stores because so many folks do not wear masks, or they leave them half on. I believe this ordinance has encouraged an attitude of skepticism about government institutions such as our Board of Health, has fostered and encouraged folks to disregard the public calls to take health precautions. I'm not alone in avoiding local retail. I know it has had an impact. This ordinance discourages me further. And fourth, this ordinance is not the will of the people. I've lived here for forty years. In my local circles of acquaintance, I've encountered no one who thinks this is a wise or timely change in our ordinances. And thank you very much for the opportunity to address you.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. Rob, do we have Ms. Mashburn back?
Yeah, she just came back in.
Okay, if you could set the timer back at four minutes, and we will call Ms. Mashburn again and hope that her feed comes through loud and clear. Ms. Mashburn, are you with us? Okay, Rob, let me let you get her back in the queue, and I will move on to Nan Scott. Nan Scott, are you with us? If you would, please turn your camera on and make yourself known. Nan Scott? Okay, I'm gonna go down the list to our last member, Mr. Edward Patrick. Mr. Patrick, are you with us? Mr. Patrick, Edward Patrick, there you are. If you would, please, sir, please state your name and your county of residence, and maybe tilt your camera up just a little bit so you can see your face.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
There you go, and you have five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for delay. I'm legally blind, so, Mr. Chairman, in the event that I get anywhere near maybe within one minute of my time, if you could please let me know.
Yes, sir.
I can't see the clock, much less read it. So let me say my name is Edward Patrick, and I am a longtime resident of Knox County. The situation that we're in now, it reminds me of a proverb that I learned when I was growing up. Don't change horses in midstream. And I traced that back with the help of the Knox County Public Library Reference Department, always helpful. And they traced it back to Lincoln's eighteen sixty-four campaign, when he said, "I may not be the smartest guy for this job, and I'm certainly not the only person, but I believe you should not swap horses in the middle of the river." And I think his words are a more accurate description of our situation. This is not a stream, this is a river. And what we're seeing from this resolution, and I respect the idea that we're under so much stress, all of us, that sometimes we say, "I've gotta do something," and this resolution does something. I think, with all due respect, I think it is the height of foolishness to pursue this resolution at this time. Now, I've heard the speakers earlier talk about how the number of cases have gone up so high in the number of deaths. But I was heartened, actually, and we've been following those numbers very carefully. In the last couple of weeks, it looked like those numbers were coming down. And we had vaccines, and we had more vaccines on the horizon. So it seemed like there was really light at the end of the tunnel, sorry, for real. And then, just shortly after I heard those better series of data, I heard that there is a UK variant which may be and is likely to be more contagious than the current original COVID. And then I heard that there is a South African variant that is likely to be more contagious and/or more lethal than the original virus. And the doctors say, "We believe these virus vaccines, rather, will be effective against these new strains, but we don't know because we have not tested them." So leaving aside the problem of getting the vaccines, which is a nightmare, we have now evidence, and we're trying to keep it out of our country, but it didn't work very well last time, and it's very hard to keep that kind of disease and maintain the United States as an island. So we have a situation where we were starting to come around the bend, and now we're hit with a double whammy of new variants, and the resolution proposes to abandon the organization which has essentially gotten us with their ideas of masks and with social distancing, which came, of course, from the CDC and has been implemented in this county to the widespread acceptance, I think. Anyway, we're abandoning that organization, and it strikes me as the exact opposite of what Lincoln said, the exact wrong thing to do. And paraphrasing him again, I would say that I entreat you to stay on the horse you've been riding till you get safe to the other side.
About forty-five seconds, sir.
Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Patrick. And I'm gonna go back to Ms. Mashburn. I believe you're back with us on the better connection. Ms. Mashburn? Ms. Mashburn? Rob?
She's in the meeting, sir.
Ms. Mashburn, if you could turn your camera on and microphone on, and we'll start your clock over again. And Rob, you have no one named Nan Scott in the waiting room?
No, sir, the waiting room is clear.
Here I am.
There you are, Ms. Mashburn. If you could, I will start the clock again at four minutes.
I apologize. Gotta love technology.
Okay, if you have two things on at the same time, turn.
I know it. I'm trying to get.
That's okay.
Sorry about that.
All right, if you would, we'll start the timer again and pick up where you left off. You have four minutes.
Just to recap where I began, the two issues that we're concerned about, public health, the economy. They're not in conflict. They should not be in competition. We know that the economy will rebound when the virus is under control. And the only way to get the virus under control is to follow our Board of Health and also to hope that the vaccines become much more, that the vaccine becomes much more widespread. Please, don't ever, tonight, commissioners, or the next month, or the months to come, consider eliminating the Board of Health. Leave them alone. Let them do their jobs without fear. You commissioners, as Mr. Burr was talking about, have a lot on your plate. You have plenty of things to do. And for starters, you could try to influence the state government so that that so-called rainy day fund, and goodness knows, if this isn't a rainy day, I don't know what is, that those funds are loosened and that we can get support in the way of low-interest loans or even grants to our small businesses. Once we can do all of that, we will be on the other side of this. So I implore you to let the Board of Health do their job. You do yours, and we'll all get through this together. Thank you, and I do apologize for my technology problems.
Chairman, you're on mute.
It's an equal opportunity problem. Sorry about that. That concludes the end of our public forum, and we will move on. Before going too much further, I do want to move up item number fifteen. And then we're gonna take the regular order because we have a lot of people in the waiting room. And if I could ask our clerk to read the caption of item number fifteen, and then we will take it from there.
This is on page five. Resolution R-21-1-113. It's a resolution of the Commission of Knox County, Tennessee, confirming the Knox County mayor's appointment of David Moon, Dr. Raymond D. Gennaro as the economist, Dr. Catherine Brown as the epidemiologist, Candace Vokes and Allison Oaks as the Knox County Business Leaders, Dr. James Chu and Regina Hensley as the Knox County Medical Professionals, Dr. Carletta Smeltzer and Dr. Joshua Williams as the psychologists or social workers, and Commissioner Dashil Lundy as the Knox County Commissioner on the Knox County Committee of Health and Economic Wellbeing, establishes strategic terms expiring January the thirty-first, twenty twenty-three, January the thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and January the thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Commissioner serves a term to coincide with the turn of a member of commission.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On the commission forum, or excuse me, on the commission agenda, you have resumes from all one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine nominees. We have asked those nominees to come tonight and join us and introduce themselves and briefly outline why they are interested in serving on this committee and have the opportunity, if you have any questions for them. So I will take them in the order that they are presented on the line and welcome them one by one. So if you have questions, please have those ready. We'll try to get through all of these in a timely manner, but please raise your hand, wave yourself, do something to catch the attention if you can. If you would, first, please welcome Mr. David Moon. Mr. Moon, if you are here, please turn your microphone and your camera on.
And do we need to have a motion?
Oh, you're right. Sorry about that. Let me take a motion in a second before we open it up for conversation. If there's a motion on the table.
Motion approved.
Second by Commissioner Durritt, first by Commissioner Daly. Sorry about that. Thank you very much. Mr. Moon, are you with us?
Commissioner Jay, I don't know if you can see me, but possibly you can hear me?
Yeah, I don't see video, but I see a photo, so. Way to start your video.
I, that is not some facsimile that I've tried to foster upon you.
No problem. If you could just give us your name and your address for the record, and introduce yourself and briefly outline why you're interested in serving on this committee.
David Moon, I live at twenty-one fifty-one Asbury Road in Knox County. I have been a resident of Knox County since nineteen eighty-one. I work in the investment management field and am interested in, you know, what I have envisioned this committee is possibly being is much akin to what the regional Federal Reserve banks have, which is there are different people from different areas of this country or the community that provide information to the people who needed to make decisions about the well-being of our citizens. And if there's some way that I can provide information that would be useful to you, I'd be really happy to do that.
Okay. Commissioners, does anyone have a question for Mr. Moon? I just have, okay, I'm not seeing any from other. I just have one question. Mr. Moon, are you an economist?
I have a master's degree in business from the University of Tennessee, and am I in a, you know, much of what we do is economic nature in terms of running analyses and economic trends, and so I do not work for an economics concern, but you'll have to decide whether or not I meet the qualifications to suit your needs as an economist.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Mr. Moon? Okay, thank you, Mr. Moon, for joining us. Is Mr. De Gennaro with us?
I am here. I'm trying to get my video. There we go.
If you could, state your name and address for the record, and if you could introduce yourself and tell us why you are interested in serving on this committee.
My name is Raymond De Gennaro. I live in the three-seven-nine-one-nine zip code. I am a professor of finance at the University of Tennessee. I've lived in Knoxville since joining the university in nineteen ninety. My education is a PhD in finance with a minor in economics. I think the number one thing that I would bring to this committee is that I intend to inform the committee, not persuade the committee. My job is not to make policy. My job is to say that if the committee does this, then this is something that might happen. If the committee does something else, then that will happen. And that's the committee's job to decide which of those outcomes it wishes to see. One thing economists do quite well is look at incentives and see what is going to happen behind the blackboard. We often impose some policy to solve one problem, and we never consider what incentives that sets up in terms of other human behavior that might lead to outcomes that are good or bad. That is essentially what economists do. I think it's an important factor for the committee to consider, and as I've said, my job is to inform the committee on what those policy decisions would mean.
Is there any questions for Mr. De Gennaro? Okay, thank you very much, sir. Seeing none, I will move on to Candace Vioxx. I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly. Ms. Vioxx, are you with us?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay.
Let's see, hold on. I'm trying to start the video.
There you go. If you would, please state your name and address for the record, and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on this committee.
Yes, my name is Candace Vioxx, so it's okay if you mispronounce it, no big deal. I am three-seven-nine-three-four. I live here in Farragut and Concord Hills. I own a restaurant that I currently am operating in Farragut at six-zero-seven North Campbell Station Road. The name of my restaurant is called Water Into Wine. I was asked to be on this committee because I'm on several committees. I was asked to be on this committee because I'm on several committees already. I am the president of the Farragut Business Alliance, so I meet with Mayor Williams every month. Um, I'm also on the Farragut Tourism and Travel Board. I am the director. Um, I'm also on the Pelicipi Alumni Business Department Advisory Board to help Dr. Wise with the entrepreneurial programs. Um, I'm also a member of the Farragut Rotary here, where I've been able to meet Congressman Burchett. Hi, Congressman. Um, and I'm a member of the Farragut West Knox Chamber. I'm actively committed to helping the Farragut businesses get through this very difficult time while being mindful. I have had to close my restaurant at ten PM because I am following the guidelines presented by the Knox County Health Board. My team members are having to wear masks to be able to serve people. Um, I do understand the gentle balance of that, but I also believe that the small business and restaurateurs in the area at least need to have a voice to be considered with some of these things moving forward. I was excited to hear this morning in New York City and in California that they are going to be opening up the restaurants again. Um, I am excited to see the numbers are going down in Knoxville. So I am, I am excited to see things starting to head in that direction. And if I can be of any help on the board going forward with some things that would impact small business and large restaurants, um, I would be of service for the Commissioners.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Vioxx? Okay, thank you very much. Moving next to Allison Oaks. Ms. Oaks, are you with us?
Hi, good evening.
Hi, if you would, please state your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on this committee.
Allison Oaks, I'm three, seven, nine, one, eight calls. Um, I, I'm an owner broker of Platinum Realty Group. And I would like to thank you for the opportunity. Um, I pray that I'm useful and provide a positive direction for anything that Knox County needs me to do. Um, as a Knox County resident and business owner, I have a passion for our local businesses to thrive and prosper during each day of the year, especially during the pandemic. With that in mind, I'd like us all to find a safe, healthy environment for the workers, shoppers, and their families. I would like to thank each of the frontline workers and essential employees. Each of us need to dig in and find a way to lift up our community. And I look forward to an opportunity of whatever you need me to do.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Ms. Oaks? Thank you very much. Ms. Brown, Kathleen Brown was not available to be here tonight. So I'll move to Dr. James Chu. Uh, Dr. Chu, are you with us? Okay, if you would, please state your name and your address for the record and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving on that committee.
Hello, my name is Dr. James Chu. I'm a Knoxville native. I'm a pain consultant at the U C for twelve years now, but I've been intimately involved in. Oh, first of all, I live in three, seven, nine, one, nine. Sorry about that. But I've been intimately involved with the opioid crisis, drug-related issues since actually arriving here in Knoxville after, um, uh, leaving for residency and fellowship and coming back here into town. Um, I've worked with Metro Drug Coalition, Tennessee Medical Association, Association, Tennessee Pain Society on a variety of drug-related issues. I've got, um, a, a commitment to, uh, talking about, um, pain. Um, also, uh, trauma as it pertains to our, our, our city and our communities. Um, I, I want to, um, and kind of represent those who are, uh, may not have a voice when it comes to their, their issues, uh, struggling with substance abuse, pain, um, and other troubling conditions, especially in a time like this during COVID, uh, where, um, and many are, 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 uh, destitute and, uh, and anxieties and depressions are up during a time like this. So, um, yeah, I'm, I'm here to serve and hopefully also here to learn and hope to help as much as possible.
Thank you, Dr. Chu. Any questions for Dr. Chu from any of the Commissioners? Okay, seeing none. Move on to Regina Hensley.
Hello, my name is Regina Hensley. I'm, uh, three, seven, nine, two, four. Uh, I have been in the nursing profession for thirty plus years. Um, I am a nurse practitioner at a skilled nursing facility and long-term care um, in another county. Um, have been in the throes of this pandemic. Um, and I think that's why, one reason why I feel so passionate about everything going on right now and what we can do for our county. Um, I have, our facility has been on lockdown for over eleven months. I have typically a hundred residents. Um, in eleven months, they have not seen their families. We have managed to keep the COVID virus out of our facility until January fourth. Um, and since then, we have had greater than forty residents with eleven have already passed. Um, I think, you know, we have a lot of health disparities in, in the community. But a larger problem that people don't realize is we have health illiteracy. I am asked every day from my residents, from my coworkers, from families. And I'm, I'm hearing all of this misinformation. Oh, well, we need to use essential oils or we need, we don't need to wear masks. We need to just let it run rampant and let it be what it is. And I think that's, that's one reason why, um, you know, I wanted, uh, to serve on this committee is because we need to dispel some of that information, misinformation. Um, and kind of help the community, you know, there's definitely burdens, economic, health, um, that we all need to work together to make sure our community moves forward in the right way um, and protect as many lives as possible while decreasing the burden on the community and the economics.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Is there any questions for Ms. Hensley from the Commission? Okay, seeing none. Thank you very much. Move on to Carletta Smeltzer. Ms. Smeltzer, are you with us?
Yes, good evening.
All right, thank you very much. If you would, state your name and address for the record and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving.
Absolutely. Carletta Smeltzer, I'm at three, seven, nine, one, eight. And I am very passionate about mental health. I've worked in the field for almost the past twenty years and just a variety of different settings. Um, I am from Knoxville. I am born and raised here. So for those reasons, I just really felt called to serve my community in this capacity.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions for Ms. Smeltzer from the Commission? Thank you very much. Uh, last on our nomination list is Dr. Joshua Williams. Dr. Williams, are you with us?
Thank you, Commissioner Jay. It's a pleasure to be with you all this evening. I appreciate your hard work and dedication to our community. I'm Dr. Joshua Williams. I'm a clinical psychologist. I'm the former Director of Psychiatric Services at East Tennessee Children's Hospital. And now I see patients in my office practice and serve on the medical staffs of several of our regional medical hospitals. I've lived in Knoxville and Knox County for forty-three years. In that time, my wife and I have raised three kids and enjoyed working with and by the side of our Knoxville neighbors. As a neighbor, as a social scientist and healthcare provider, I'm honored to serve on this committee. Very often, our leaders are asked to make policy in areas where they have little or no personal experience. I'm delighted to know that our county commission and mayor are seeking guidance from folks like us who have frontline experience. I also look forward to supporting Dr. Buchanan and our health department in any way that I can in fighting the scourge of COVID nineteen. We need their leadership and guidance in fighting the worst public health threat our nation has confronted in over one hundred years. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Is there any questions from the Commissioners? From our Dr. Williams? Okay, the last person that's part of this resolution is Commissioner Lundey. Commissioner Lundey, did you want to add anything else to the conversation or?
I just want to say it's, it's an honor to serve. I know it's been, uh, uh, people did not like this committee. I got a lot of pushback. But as a healthcare provider, I do understand that the mental health, uh, aspect is very important. A lot of my patients are not doing good since we've been in this pandemic for a while now. And I'm, I'm honored to serve and hopefully I'm bringing my commission side and my physical therapy side to this committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lundey. Uh, Commissioner Smith, your hand is up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As missed reported by a local reporter that I asked for a urologist to be on this board. Uh, as someone that's had a kidney stone, I have begged for a urologist before. But what I was referring to was a virologist. Uh, and Dr. Buchanan had said no one had stepped forward. I was wondering if Dr. Buchanan has had anybody from that field that has stepped forward because it was one of the occupations listed in the ordinance. Is Dr. Buchanan still here?
Uh, I don't know, but I know that, um, if she's not, I think Dwight Van De Veyt from the mayor's office was turning a point on the thing and had told us that no one had applied, but Dr. Buchanan, I see you there if you want to.
I'm sorry, I'm still here. Um, so virology is a pretty specific and limited field. Um, and so I reached out to, uh, local hospitals to see if they had a virologist on staff. None of them did. So we sent the information to the university and asked them to share it broadly across the university. And we didn't get any applicants. So.
Okay.
I don't personally know any virologists at all.
Dr. Buchanan, that, that's what I'm hearing too amongst the people I asked, that it's a very specialized field. And there may not actually be any that live in this area. Um, with that said, um, I know we can't do this tonight. But I, I think that someone to add to this board committee would be an actuary. I think someone that knows numbers, that knows the science of math is also a good person to have on this board to be advising us on whatever it is these, that, that this board's going to advise us for in the future, which, and I want to make clear right now, uh, my position of appointing these people to this position is not to replace the Board of Health, but it's to have a different set of people looking at things differently beyond medical, medical issues, uh, economic issues, a lot of different issues. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Is there any other discussion on item number fifteen? Okay, item fifteen has a motion by Commissioner Daley and a second by Commissioner Durritt for approval. Any additional discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the vote?
Commissioner Daley?
Aye.
Commissioner Daley, that's aye. Commissioner Jay?
No.
Commissioner Jay, that's no. Commissioner Biggs?
Yes.
Commissioner Biggs votes aye. Commissioner Lundey?
Aye.
Commissioner Lundey votes aye. Commissioner Durritt?
Aye.
Commissioner Durritt votes aye. Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith votes aye. Commissioner Ward?
Aye.
Commissioner Ward votes aye. Commissioner Skumaker?
Aye.
Commissioner Skumaker votes aye. Commissioner Hill?
No.
Commissioner Hill votes no. Commissioner Bussler?
Aye.
Commissioner Bussler votes aye. And Commissioner Beeler?
Aye.
Commissioner Beeler votes aye. Nine, aye, two, no.
Okay, thank you very much. The motion passes. Thank you all for your service in Knox County and for joining the committee. Uh, I don't know what our next steps for that, um, but I imagine somebody will be in touch soon. Um, that is taking us up to approval of minutes, but it's six forty-six and we have voting zoning starting at seven. So I am, uh, going to put this meeting into recess. Give us a quick break and then we will start our zoning meeting, uh, seven, at seven. And then we will, or seven oh five, actually, I'll give everybody a couple more minutes. And then we'll come back to this and resume our agenda thereafter. So this meeting is in recess.